Perhaps we'll wait a moment as I know some of my colleagues are coming over from closed session. Just give everybody a minute to join. Okay, welcome. We'll, we'll call the meeting to order for the morning of June 30th. Tony, would you please call the roll?
Jimenez.
President.
Morales.
President.
Yep.
President.
Roscoe. Davis.
Here.
Ms. Barza. Arenas. Foley.
Aye.
Camus.
Here.
Camus. Jones. Licardo.
Here. I think we probably still have some more folks who are transitioning from closed session. Just wait a minute more.
We do have six.
We do, okay. Yeah, I'm hesitant to jump right in with such a small number of council members. Ordinarily, we'd have ceremonials and that would be fine, but we don't have ceremonials in this case.
I can do the invocation if you'd like, Mayor.
Why don't we do that? Why don't we start with the Pledge of Allegiance and we'll go into the invocation?
And I have the adjournment as well, too, if you'd like to jump into that up to you.
Thank you, Councilman Foley. So let's, if you're able to stand, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Councilmember Davis, thank you for providing invocation.
You're welcome. Good morning, everyone. This invocation is from the new Rabbi at Congregation Amahad. At a time of much uncertainty and unrest in our country, it is so important to turn our attention to the beautiful blessings that God has bestowed upon our nation. We are blessed to live in a country where we can openly protest and demand equality for all of our citizens. It is this God-given right of equality that is the centerpiece of the United States of America. We pray to the Creator of the universe that we will have the strength and moral clarity to always live up to this crucial ideal. We pray now, more than ever, for the gift of peace and healing for our fractured world. We commit ourselves not to just live through this difficult period, but to have the courage and strength to thrive as well. Together, as a united people, we have the power to overcome darkness by adding light. Light in our own lives and to the lives of all the people we come in contact with. With blessings of love and healing, Rabbi Reuven Goldstein, Congregation Amahad.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. On orders of the day, I know Councilmember Foley will be offering an adjournment in memory of Bob Keefe, who's a wonderful friend of the city's. But I know there are some other items that I wanted to, to address with regard to the, the work plan here. There's a new item 2.29, which is action related to the agreement with Widdow Brian LLC for COVID-19-related public health planning and crisis communication consulting report to the editor of the Orders of the Day. That requires determination of two-thirds, and I guess I'd ask, Rick, is that two-thirds of the members present or two-thirds of the total council?
It's two-thirds of the total council, or if you don't have two-thirds, it's unanimous.
Okay, all right. Well, hopefully we'll get there. And then staff is requesting that item 8.6, which is certain provisions of land use requirements alfresco be heard after item 3.9, which is Greater Downtown Economic Recovery Initiative, since they're closely related, certainly will do that if they make the motion. So I just, I also want to, you know, normally Dave and I would talk, but we've been so rushed with all the, the meetings. Yesterday, I don't think we've really had a chance to connect. Dave, I know there are several items here. 8.4 has to do with land acquisition for an affordable housing project. 8.3 has to do with land acquisition for a fire station. Several of these items may be quite time sensitive as we're trying to negotiate these deals. Would it make sense for us to say that, since 3.10, I would expect is going to involve substantial community input, that we'd say that that would not be not before, say, 2:00 PM, so that we could try to clear the calendar of as many of these items as possible?
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense, Mayor.
Okay. Any, any objection to that? Okay, then. So those are the suggested changes to the Orders of the Day. And Councilmember Foley, you kind enough to offer in a German in honor of Bob Keefe.
Thank you, Mayor. Bob Keefe, a resident of District 9, was a shining example of community spirit and civic engagement in San Jose. He passed away recently at the age of 98, perhaps best known locally for his work in radio in the Bay Area as founder of Empire Broadcasting and having served as a speechwriter for President Dwight Eisenhower. However, Bob was also involved in many local community organizations. I'm sure we've all know Bob and have had interaction with him as he advocates for the strength and survival of our businesses in San Jose. But he's also been involved in the San Jose Symphony, Silicon Valley Leadership Group, Regional Medical Center, and the Rotary Club of San Jose, where I serve as a member with him. It was during his presidency at the Rotary Club of San Jose that Bob fought for and ultimately won the inclusion of women in our club. I have many fond memories of Bob in the Rotary Club, as many of us probably do, including a meeting where he danced the flamenco 10 years ago at the age of 88. What an impressive sight that was. I didn't even really know who he was, but when he stood up on that stage and danced at 88, it was incredible. Bob was a huge proponent of signs in our downtown and worked to change the rules around our downtown signage. Today, the signs on our buildings in downtown help give San Jose a unique skyline and sense of identity, and we have Bob to thank for that. In 2018, in recognition of all of his contributions to the city, the council declared December 9th Bob's Birthday as Bob Keefe Day. Bob was an essential part of San Jose's civic landscape, and his legacy and contributions will not be easily forgotten. And so I am honored to announce the adjournment of this council meeting in the name of this honorable civic booster, Bob Keefe.
Thank you, Councilmember Foley. I'll just add, I, I've known Bob for more than a decade and was an incredibly kind man, and so insightful and incredible amount of energy. And although he, he had a remarkable personal history in serving the country, he was actually a speechwriter for President Eisenhower. He never bragged about any of his extraordinary accomplishments, but I just remember fondly past conversations when he talked about some of the great stories shared from, from those days. And he's, he's someone who's going to be sorely missed by many, many people in this community. All right, is there a, a motion?
Move to accept changes, the Orders of the Day with the recommended changes?
Second.
Okay, any comments, all right, on the motion? Tony?
Jimenez.
Yes.
Morales.
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
Roscoe.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Ms. Barza.
Yes.
Arenas.
Yes.
Foley.
Aye.
Camus.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Licardo.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got enough votes to get 2.29 on the ballot or on the, on the agenda. So we're on to the Closed Session Report, right?
Yes, Mayor, the council met in closed session this morning. We have no report out of closed sessions.
Thank you. Item 3.1 is reported to the City Manager. I know there'll be presentations, there always is. I, I would recommend, given the many items we have, and I expect substantial public input on at least a couple of these items, that we would limit council member discussion on each under 15 minutes per council member. But we can certainly entertain any different motions at this time.
Mayor, are you making a motion to limit our time on 3.1 to 15 minutes? Is that what you're doing right now?
No, I'm just suggesting that that would be the constraint unless there's a contrary motion. If somebody wants to make a different motion, you're welcome to.
Why don't we shoot for that and just quit putting limits and just shoot for being as, as, you know, as brief as we can?
Councilmember Ross?
I wanted to just clarify, did you say 15 minutes on each item, or were you just talking about 3.1?
Just 3.1, because I know this can become very lengthy, and even with 15 minutes, it means it will go on for more than three hours.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thanks.
Yeah, it'd just be 3.1. Okay, there, so again, any motion? If not, then we'll proceed. Dave, thank you.
I move to not limit time on 3.1.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion for no limits. Let's vote.
Sorry, I'm still getting used to the screen sharing. Jimenez.
Yes.
Morales.
Aye.
Yep.
Nay.
Roscoe.
Aye.
Davis.
No.
Ms. Barza.
Yes.
Arenas.
Yes.
Foley.
No.
Camus.
No.
Jones.
Aye.
Licardo.
No. Okay, we'll proceed. Dave?
Mayor, for the benefit of the council, I voted yes, but I want to remind my colleagues that I only have 140,000 hours of life left. And so can they keep that, take that into consideration as they're talking?
Would you like to make a motion along those lines, Vice Mayor?
No, but I just want to lay it, throw that out there.
Okay, it's not the private Vice Mayor anymore of his life. All right, Dave?
Thank you, Mayor. As always, appreciate this opportunity. Couple of things to update you, and then we'll get into the presentation. Last week, we held three listening sessions. We staff facilitated by various Gare team members. These listening sessions created a space for really honest sharing with some of our city employees in a space where I could really listen to feelings and concerns and, and ideas about racial equity and, and the recent events, both locally and throughout our nation. I found it extremely valuable and very powerful to hear from some of our, our employees, and we will be figuring out what the next steps are. I just wanted to thank all of the staff that were able to participate in the various Gare team members who facilitated the sessions. As far as our unsung heroes today, I want to recognize some people in our building, planning, and code enforcement department. As, as you all know, construction is one of the keys to our recovery. And we really have three unsung heroes in the Building Division, and so they are Bill Main, Mark Garcia, and Azalea Barrander. Mark and Bill are both division managers on the Inspection Services Team, and Azalea is a principal office specialist. These three, along with other supervisors and team members, pulled together all the new procedures to keep inspectors working efficiently and safely. They pulled together safety training procedures and obviously provided all of the staff with PPE. They, as we have talked about before, promoted new technologies for remote inspections and digitized inspection notices. There's a pretty significant deployment process that happens in the morning time. If you're here in City Hall, you can see it happening. It's very impressive, and they've just done a wonderful job in, in making sure that we're doing our best to keep up with all of this inspection demands in the city. Between May 4th and June 12th, this team handled nearly 15,000 inspection accounts. And I just want to mention that these three individuals in particular were not only nominated by, by other city staff, but we received some letters of recognition from our permit customers. So just want to show a very quick video here, just to put some faces to the names that I mentioned. So thanks again to Bill and Mark and Azalea and the rest of the inspection staff. Really appreciate all of the work that's going on out there. So we'll jump into the presentations. Lee will be heading up the EOC update today. You'll also be getting a financial recovery and intergovernmental relations update from Bennet Chang. And then Jim Orpall and Jackie and John will be providing an update on our COVID homeless response and our Beautify San Jose response and how we're weaving those together. And then Lee will also provide a little bit of a preview of what work we're going to be doing in July and also how we propose to be able to communicate with the mayor and the council and the public during July as well. So Lee, if you could take it from here?
Thank you, Dave. And on behalf of Kip Hartness and I, I want to thank everyone for their, their work in the EOC and the organization the past week as we've continued to focus on serving our community aggressively and effectively with the COVID crisis. This past week, we've continued the food distribution program with no gaps. For our community this work, week, we served roughly 2.7 million people, which is a slight decrease. And we've continued to see that over the past few weeks if people have started to, had the opportunity to go back to work. We've continued the site preparation for the temporary housing sites that you'll hear a little bit later. And we've continued to keep our people safe and the public safe while they do their work. And this includes increased decontamination work at city facilities. And as additional planning, as we start to bring some of our facilities back online with the purchase of PPE and additional janitorial services. Our local assistant branch has been working on business outreach and support. This last week, they conducted a webinar on Main Street lending program and finished a second short video on financing of your business. And lastly, just for the roadmap update, our emergency public information office within the EOC has continued to keep the information, information to our residents specifically around some of our park openings and the city's alfresco program. And then last week, we were asked by council to report back on some of the construction sites where there had been positive tests related to COVID. In total, 15 construction sites in the city have reported that positive case of COVID since construction resumed several weeks ago. This includes five within the past week. Per county guidance, all of these sites have been cleared except for two. The city has halted inspections at those, at those two sites, however. At one of the sites, we've received word yesterday of an additional two positive tests. And so we will continue to follow the protocols, protocol strictly and not inspect those sites that report positive cases to protect our own workforce. In the event of confirmed cases of COVID-19 at any job site, the following must take place. We immediately remove the infected individuals from a job site with directions to seek medical care. Each location of an infected worker must be decontaminated and sanitized by an outside vendor, certified in hazmat cleanups, and work with all locations that this individual may have been as a part of the logistics or supply chain of the construction site. And lastly, the county public health department must be notified immediately, and any additional requirements per county health officials must be completed, including full compliance with any tracing efforts that were outlined yesterday by the county. So that is our main EOC update. I'll be back later to talk about our focus over the legislative break, July over the summer, as well as how we'll keep in contact with the council. But I will hand it over to Bennet Chang to talk about some of our financial recovery updates and our focused work this summer.
Thanks, Lee. First slide, please. So Bennet Chang, the Director of Intergovernmental Relations for the city. Wanted to give you guys first a federal update. As you know, since Congress and the president signed three and a half packages, really the progress has stalled. Currently, Congress is negotiating the fourth package. Recently, also, the House Democrats have introduced an infrastructure bill and really started transitioning the conversation to economic recovery. Next slide, please. On the fourth package, as you know, the House passed the Heroes Act. As Lee mentioned yesterday, this is a $3 trillion package that covers a wide range of activities, including extending the pandemic unemployment insurance, additional state and local government assistance, and direct stimulus payments to taxpayers. The president continues to advocate for payroll tax credits, but the White House has also recently signaled willingness to continue extending the pandemic unemployment insurance. And then on the Senate Republican side, they have really taken a wait-and-see approach. Senate Republicans continue to talk about additional business liability protection as being key for any next package. And then we recently also learned that Senator Rubio is forming a bipartisan work group to talk about additional small business programs and assistance. Next slide. As, in the meantime, as I mentioned, the House is scheduled to vote this week on the Moving Forward Act. This is a $1.5 trillion infrastructure package that includes funding for a lot of traditional infrastructure projects, including those listed on your screen. We don't anticipate that the Senate will be taking action on an infrastructure proposal. And really, we will wait and see until after the November election to see if Congress will want to take action. On the fourth package, we are anticipating that there'll be additional work that happens in July, after the July 4th break. Next slide. State side, the governor signed last night the state budget, and this budget deal closed a $54 billion deficit. The budget anticipates additional federal funding to defer some payments and significantly uses the state's budget reserves. Even though this was strongly a budget of cuts, there is still investment in some key areas for the city, which includes $515 million from the state share of the coronavirus relief funds from the CARES Act on homelessness activities. And this is actually a little bit broader than just hotel motel acquisition and also includes tiny homes and other homelessness supports. It also included $300 million in state general fund money for round two of the housing assistance, homeless housing assistance program or H-HAP. And then finally, it also includes $50 million for continual assistance for public safety power shut-off events. I just really wanted to thank the mayor for leading the Big City Mayor's Coalition and advocating very successfully for the housing funding this year. Next slide, please. We also wanted to give council a quick snapshot of some of the other state activities that we've been working on around the regulations and policy side. We have been working very hard on a couple of revenue items. One of them was protecting excess educational revenue augmentation fund money. It's a property tax dollars that flow to the county and also to cities and special districts. We've also been working on some changes to, the proposed changes at the Board of Equalization around property tax valuations on the revenue side. COVID-19 has also delayed some of the activities that we've been working on and that have required us to ask the state for additional timeline extensions. So this includes AB 900 projects as well as some new requirements around organic waste enforcement. So we've been working closely with regulators and the state legislature to ask for extensions on those. And then finally, on the regulatory's front, we have been working very closely with the county and the alcohol beverage control on outdoor dining restrictions. And so with that, that concludes our report, and we will pass it on to Jim and Jackie for the next section.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. Jim Orpall, Deputy City Manager and EOC Operations Section Coordinator. We're here this morning to describe the EOC response to the declared shelter crisis during COVID and our efforts to address encampment trash and debris, blight, illegal dumping, and protest damage and graffiti as these challenges have become more acute during the many months of COVID. In the EOC, we've stood up three specific branches to address these important issues. The Homeless Support Branch, led by Reagan Henninger. The Emergency Interim Housing Branch, led by Matt Cano and James Stagie. And the newest branch, just stood up to initially address protest damage, is now focused on addressing growing encampment trash and debris and citywide litter and blight issues. Jackie Morales Ferrand, our Housing Director, will give the first part of the presentation and frame our COVID-19 shelter crisis, crisis response within the context of the community plan to end homelessness. The community plan was almost complete in March when COVID hit. Today's presentation is not intended to fully address the community plan. That's expected to come in front of the council in late August. We're contacting it today so the council can see how key parts of the city's COVID shelter response align with Strategy 3 of the community plan. After Jackie presents, all then provide a focused discussion around the Beautify SJ response, including services that were initially suspended and have since been restarted, and the new pilot plans and efforts aimed at addressing the growing encampment trash and other blight-related issues. So I'll turn it over to Jackie for the next slide.
Thank you, Jim. According to our 2019 homeless census, there are over 6,000 homeless individuals in San Jose. 84% are unsheltered and living in uninhabitable conditions. Next slide. During the last five years, the focus of our efforts have been on creating a coordinated response, which includes the city, the county, nonprofits, destination home, and private sector partners who focused our efforts on solving homelessness by providing housing. New programs included the first permanent supportive housing development in San Jose, a rapid rehousing program that provides rental subsidies, and a homeless prevention program that before COVID-19 was serving approximately 1,000 families and individuals. Because all the data was being finally collected into one system, which is our HMIS system, the data showed us that despite these shifts in providing housing for people, for every one person we housed, three new people were becoming homeless. And again, this is pre-COVID-19. We also heard loud and clear from both the city, from both the city council, our housed and unhoused residents, that supportive housing solutions were taking too long, and we needed to include interim housing solutions. Next slide. The new community plan to end homelessness includes a strategy to improve the quality of life for unsheltered individuals and create healthy neighborhoods for all. While Jim has also stated, the focus of this presentation is not on the community plan. I wanted to highlight that the community plan continues to be our roadmap in developing and implementing solutions even when we are responding to COVID-19. Next slide. What has made our current situation particularly challenging and dynamic is that we now have the COVID pandemic on top of the is that we now have the COVID pandemic on top of the pre-existing shelter crisis, requiring responsive and urgent action. On March 16th, Santa Clara County issued a shelter-in-place order for residents in the county. The CDC also issued guidance as it related to unsheltered people with a request to shelter as many people as possible. Given the large number of unsheltered people in our county and city, and despite our efforts to stand up over 1,000 temporary shelter beds, it was not clearly enough to shelter all the 5,000 unsheltered residents in our city. And so we have been following the CDC guidance, and we immediately suspended abatements of encampments. Next slide. In looking at Strategy Three, which again was to improve the quality of life for unsheltered individuals and to create healthy neighborhoods, this strategy also set out some goals, two of them which are included in our COVID-19 response. One is to double the number of year-round shelter in addition to increasing street outreach and hygiene services. As I've mentioned already, we've added over 1,100 beds, but because of the need to thin the shelters out, the total capacity that we actually added was 605. We also focused another part of our response on providing outreach and hygiene and sanitation stations to larger encampments. And I'll explain more about that strategy in this presentation. Next slide, please. As Jim has already shared, the EOC created three branches that are all responding to implementing a COVID-19 response. And I'm going to focus on the homeless support branch and the emergency interim housing branch. Next slide. When COVID-19 hit, the Housing Department immediately reached out to the county to develop one coordinated plan. We meet weekly with the county destination home to discuss challenges and solutions. And Reagan, our Deputy Director, is actually embedded in the county EOC in order to ensure that we have close communication and we are aligned. We also, this effort also ensures that we don't duplicate our efforts. We leverage our funding, and again, we're communicating regularly on how we can improve our response. This slide highlights our coordinated, again, county-wide response. One of the first actions we took was to create a shelter hotline. Prior to COVID-19, a person had to check each individual shelter to find out if there was space available. Now a person just needs to call the hotline, and the person will receive a call within 24 hours or one business day. One of the complaints that I've heard is that the person didn't get a recall back. The county calls are logged and tracked, so when we do receive a specific complaint, the county is able to track what the actual response was and to follow up with the individual. Another concern I hear is that the person wasn't actually offered anything. Motels and hotels are being used for vulnerable residents. And therefore, if the caller doesn't meet the definition of vulnerable, the person is offered space at one of our congregate shelters. Often, the caller rejects that shelter option because their preferred option is the motel room. And so it isn't the case that we're not offering an option. It's often the case that the option that is being provided is not one that the caller wants. Secondly, we've expanded our shelter system. And again, one of the first needs we identified was the need to thin out our shelters to allow for social distancing. The city opened Parkside Hall, South Hall, and the family shelter at Camden Community Center. The county has taken the lead in leasing hotels throughout the county. Almost half are located in the city, but the remaining rooms are located in six other cities in the county. One question I've been often asked is why are there still empty hotel rooms? The county is keeping 68 hotel rooms available for people who need isolation or need to be quarantined. This is offered to both housed and unhoused residents. Approximately 50% of these rooms have been used by housed residents who did not have a safe place to isolate. Once a new hotel is located and opened up, the county systematically begins to fill it up. And once it is filled, they often remain over 90% occupied. Next slide. The interim housing, the emergency interim housing branch is moving forward with the three interim housing sites, with our first site on Monterey Road at Burnell scheduled to open up in late July. And we've given you a presentation on this particular strategy. Next slide. Our final strategy that we've been using is to, and it's because it's in response to COVID-19 and because we do not have sufficient shelter to meet the needs of our unhoused residents, the city is providing hygiene solutions at our larger encampments to keep people safe. We have developed a three-pronged approach. The first approach includes hygiene, which has handwashing stations, portable restrooms, mobile showers, and trash pickup. You'll hear more about trash pickup from Jim. The second part of this strategy is street outreach. You may recall that we've had better outcomes from the PATH outreach teams downtown because they are able to focus their efforts with regular visits and communication with downtown homeless individuals. By providing regular focused outreach to selected encampments, we hope to achieve similar results. These outreach teams provide COVID-19 information and support residents to keep their areas clean and to practice social distancing. And finally, the last piece of this approach is to provide housing solutions. The housing solutions include access to the shelter hotline, housing assessments to ensure that if we identify somebody who's living in an encampment, we get them signed up for our housing programs. And finally, under development, is our new housing program, problem-solving approach. And with that, there are some people we can get off the streets by looking at other creative solutions where they might be able to stay with a friend or family member. But the goal in housing problem solutions is to get somebody off the street as quickly as possible. We also hope to expand our outreach by providing enhanced outreach. We want to include a mental health worker to provide support to our residents who live in encampments who are having and experiencing challenging situations. And finally, Jim will discuss a proposed waste management service that we hope to implement very shortly. And with that, I will turn it over to Jim.
Next slide, please. So the EOC has been scaling its Beautify SJ response during COVID based upon what the county order has allowed and what we thought was prudent. Stopping the spread of COVID was the highest priority by far in the March and April timeframe. As the county public orders evolved and the city gained a better understanding and capability on how to provide certain services safely, Beautify SJ response has been scaling up. And what I'll go through now will cover both the impacts of the scale down during March and April and the scaling back up that is now well underway around blight, illegal dumping, and encampment trash. Next slide, please. So in March, under the first county order and public health guidance, the city continued certain basic Beautify SJ services but suspended others. And the notable suspensions are encampment abatements and the associated cleanings, neighborhood dumpster days, the rapid illegal dumping team, and the SJ Bridge Cleaning Program. You can see that on the table on this slide. Unfortunately, you know, this has resulted in impacts to our city in critical areas such as increased service request backlogs to illegal dumping. In addition to that, we've experienced increased trash from encampments. Abatements were the main approach to cleaning at encampments. Without that occurring, we're having to develop new ways to address trash at encampments. And then increased resident spring cleaning with people being home at shelter-in-place. They're tackling garage projects, backyard projects, and we're finding that illegal dumping ending up on our streets. And then we also had to address protest damage and graffiti cleanup. And these same teams that are doing the other work had to pivot to this type of work. So this certainly didn't put us in a good position to address all that we need to. But we are rescoping our efforts and getting focus. So let me go to the next slide. So this slide aims to scope and frame the large, widespread nature of both the homeless encampment challenge and the illegal dumping problem. The map on the left notes the 5,000 unsheltered residents in our city that Jackie referenced earlier and the thousands of complaints the city has received since December 2019 about encampments, which are denoted by the triangles on the map on the left. Many of them represent multiple complaints, and the map on the right identifies the locations of over 7,600 San Jose 311 complaints on illegal dumping received since December of 2019. Next slide, please. So this slide shows the severity and complexity of the challenge, but the problems intersect yet are distinct and not the same. Both are individually complex and have various root causes that are not easily identified or solved. They're widespread and they touch every part of our city, although it's clear certain parts of our city are much harder hit. However, just prioritizing the hardest-hit areas in the city does not adequately address the challenge, leaving staff in a whack-a-mole response mode when dealing with the continuous flow of complaints. To date, the challenges have far exceeded the resources to adequately address the needs, resulting in gaps and insufficient service frequency. It's forced us into a reactive mode, leaving our city with visibly poor conditions. Next slide, please. So staff recognized during COVID that normal department structures and approaches were not capable to address this complex challenge, and a new organizational response was needed. Much like we did on emergency interim housing, we stood up a Beautify SJ branch in the EOC to restart suspended services, to coordinate services better, and to pivot towards the protest damage and graffiti response as well. More recently, we focused this effort on encampment trash and illegal dumping backlogs and developing a long-term plan after we moved past kind of EOC response mode. The team is being led by Rick Scott, Deputy Director and DOT. Olympia Williams from PRNS is the Operations Coordinator. Sarah Zarate from the City Manager's Office is the Plans Coordinator. Amory Brandt from the City Manager's Office is the Data Analyst. And John Guyer from ESD is our Waste Management and Disposal Expert. The team literally has met every day over the past two weeks to work the problem and address the urgency of the situation. Next slide, please. So the branch has identified three interrelated goals. The first goal is to immediately ramp up resources and increase emergency trash pickup where needed and to develop a systematic waste disposal approach for encampment residents. I think it's important to understand this point. Almost every one of our 1 million residents receives garbage and recycling services on a weekly basis. The reality is our 5,000 unsheltered residents don't own a rent property and don't have corresponding garbage service. Nonetheless, they generate trash and recycling, but with no effective way to contain or dispose of it. Imagine what each one of our streets would look like if the garbage haulers that serve our residences each week did not come to pick up. And further imagine if we did not have carts to put the garbage in and just push the loose garbage to the curb. At homeless encampments, the city is left with the task of responding on an ad hoc basis to collect and pick up loose trash bags and all types of debris. It's not an efficient system. During COVID, we've been responding to some 60-plus encampments on a somewhat regular basis because we recognize trash is a daily and weekly occurrence. More to come on the next slide. The second goal here is to restart all Beautify SJ services and better coordinate and calibrate the right mix and most impactful group of them. And then finally, over the next six months, we need to redefine the most important and needed Beautify SJ services that will create the best results and deliver them more efficiently and develop a plan to address the resource and service gaps to really know what it takes to have a city that looks good, where we can actually get out in front of the problem or at least stay even with it, and ultimately turn service delivery back into our normal city organization. Next slide, please. So this slide identifies specific actions and objectives the branch will deploy over the next eight weeks and then continue through the end of December 2020, the timeframe that we have for the use of the coronavirus relief funds that are allocated to this activity. I'll highlight a few of them. We're going to be investing those coronavirus relief funds to support encampment sanitation while we have suspended abatements, which were the main cleanup tool for encampments pre-COVID. We're going to figure out a more effective and efficient regular trash container disposal system for the 60-plus encampment sites. We're going to deploy a dumpster pilot program immediately at large encampments where large amounts of trash is being generated. We're going to safely redeploy services during COVID stage six and seven so that all Beautify SJ services are active, coordinated, and providing services. We're going to identify and prioritize hotspots from a need and equity lens. And then over the long term, we want to pilot, measure, and learn from Goal 1 and 2 activities and clearly redefine the program purpose, goals, and measures of success that allow us to identify the service delivery gaps and to recommend a unified resource and service plan that achieves success, a clean city. Next slide, please, and I only have a couple more. I just want to update the city council about the city's approach to encampments during COVID. Certainly between the city and county, we're trying to temporarily shelter as many unsheltered people as possible, but we're well short of the 5,000 beds needed. Based upon CDC and county health guidance to limit movement of people, especially those unsheltered, abatements are suspended. This is to support the county's efforts to COVID test and trace positive cases among those in encampments and to provide isolation to avoid spread. But certain conditions create public safety hazards, and this protocol aims to address public rights-of-way like streets, sidewalks, and trails that are encamped, blocked, or impassable. The recent Guadalupe River Trail outreach, cleaning, clearing of the trail is an effort to maintain access to public rights-of-way while addressing large amounts of trash and debris and not forcing long-distance relocations of unsheltered people. The next slide just gives a quick example of kind of what we're dealing with. These pictures, kind of the upper-left one, shows green bags that are distributed by the Beautify SJ team as a way to contain trash and make it easier for unsheltered to place their trash and to make pickup more orderly. The bottom pictures show trash that's loose. It's very labor-intensive to pick up, hence the need for a more organized kind of waste management system. Last slide is just really concluding. Obviously, we have, next slide, please. Just we have a major effort underway around trying to shelter as many people as possible, outreach to as many people as possible, have conditions in the encampments be as sanitary as possible, and then to try and address the Beautify SJ and trash elements of it as well. That concludes this presentation, and then I'll turn it over to Reagan Henninger, who's going to give a brief report on the emergency trailers that were sent to the city. So I'll turn it over to Reagan.
Morning. I appreciate the opportunity to provide an overview of the trailer program and why the decision was made to demobilize the site and transition people to hotels. Next slide. On March 20th, the city received 104 trailers from the state with less than 24 hours' notice of their arrival. The decision was made to deliver the trailers to the Kelly Park parking lot. The location was selected because it's city-controlled, and there was no time to negotiate a lease with a private entity. The lot was also closed due to the Happy Hollow Park closure and Kelly Park closure. And the lot size was large enough to accommodate 104 RVs. Although the city had never used RV trailers as an emergency shelter or housing solution for homeless, the EOC and Housing Department staff were hopeful the trailers could provide a creative solution to this unprecedented health crisis. a creative solution to this unprecedented health crisis. Only two of the trailers were immediately usable. 90 of the trailers required repair, some more extensive than others, and 14 were and remain unusable. The city was also informed by Cal OES that the trailers could only be used to provide non-congregate shelter options for homeless people who are either COVID-positive or presumably exposed to the virus, or high-risk per the CDC guidelines. It was decided to use the trailers to serve the high-risk, vulnerable homeless individuals. At the time, back in March, the county and the state were setting up a 250-bed field medical center at the Santa Clara Convention Center that was to be used for COVID-positive. So it was determined that serving the vulnerable population was the best use of this resource. Next slide. So there were significant setup and operations involved. It took two months to get the trailers repaired and placed into working order. The setup and repairs needed were significant. The 90 damaged trailers included things like damaged cabinets, missing cabinets, missing beds, broken appliances, missing gas canisters, missing propane tanks, damaged hookups for electric sewer and water, and even holes in the side and roofs of some trailers. Some were missing vent covers and others missing plumbing fixtures. We also had to build an entire temporary utility infrastructure. The Kelly Park-Happy Hollow parking lot did not have electrical or plumbing systems. The trailers required plumbing and electrical hookups to be habitable and provide the safety and security needed to house such vulnerable individuals. The above-ground infrastructure for potable water and sewage didn't include showers because the amount of water required for showers would overwhelm this temporary sewage system. And secondly, many of the trailers, as I mentioned, did not come with propane tanks needed to heat water for hot showers. So we had to bring in a portable shower trailer. Generators also provided the site with electricity, as trenching and dropping electrical was not appropriate for this temporary site. The other onsite operations needed included 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week security with six officers on duty for every shift due to the large nature of the site, and onsite operator also onsite 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and daily maintenance of the RVs and the temporary infrastructure. Next slide. Once the site was opened, we had significant challenges and client safety issues. In the first three weeks of operations, there were daily maintenance events and malfunctions of either the temporary infrastructure of the trailers themselves, resulting in concerns of whether the site was cost-effective to operate, but most importantly, whether or not it was safe for our most vulnerable residents. There were daily heat and hot water challenges. Participants were required to walk to the temporary shower trailer, and for those with breathing, heart, or mobility issues, walking to these trailers to access basic needs was often challenging. There were even door malfunctions on the trailers. Two guests and one operation staff got locked inside the trailers due to the doors malfunctioning. The plumbing and sewer issues were constant, if not daily. In the three weeks we were there, there were eight major plumbing repairs, including overflow of sewage into bathtubs and overflow of sewage in the exterior holding tanks. And yes, that photo on the right is exactly what you think it is. And the site had significant issues with power as well. On May 26th, the generators that powered the site ran out of fuel, and for four hours during a severe heat advisory, we were out of power, which meant vulnerable individuals with health conditions had no power, including air conditioning. Two days later, on May 28th, the generators ran out of fuel again, and we were out of power for three hours. Again, vulnerable individuals with no air conditioning. There were even fires onsite or near the site that meant real, critical safety issues for our vulnerable residents. On May 27th and 29th, grass fires occurred in the surrounding area near Happy Hollow Park, causing significant smoke, resulting in challenges for participants with COPD, asthma, and other breathing issues. And more significantly, on June 1st, an unoccupied trailer caught fire and was destroyed in just seven minutes. And 10 minutes later, the two trailers on either side were also destroyed. The trailers were unoccupied, and thankfully, no one was hurt. And the cause of the fire was an electrical malfunction within the trailer. These significant maintenance challenges and repairs, along with client safety concerns, were the driving factors in the decision to find an alternative use for the trailers and transition those vulnerable residents into hotels. Next slide. Since opening on May 14th, the site served a total of 39 households, consisting of both individuals and couples. Of this total, nine households left the program on their own with concerns about their safety and comfort of the trailers. The average age of the clients we served was 64. All the clients had underlying health conditions that included COPD, severe asthma, or other significant breathing issues, heart disease, cancer, hepatitis C, liver disease, infections causing difficulty in walking and mobility. The result of these underlying health conditions is often mobility challenges, which are difficult in a site that was this large. Abode, our onsite service provider, found many clients had trouble walking the distance to the showers, or even walking to take their trash out. And some clients struggled to manage the stairs in and out of their trailers. At the time of the site closure, 30 of the trailers were occupied with 35 people. Clients were notified on a Wednesday that the site would be closing. And Abode worked with individuals over six days to help them plan, prepare, and transition, and choose a location that best suited their needs. The following Monday, all the clients were transitioned to hotels and were provided transportation to hotels. A total of 35 people, eight dogs, and one turtle made it safely to hotels. And one important thing to know is that we did not have a loss in capacity due to the closing. The housing department is funding the operations of 90 hotel rooms. Next slide. So the EOC, we have been exploring what a long-term relocation of the trailers might take. We've done some initial analysis of what would be required. We would need a significant parcel of land to properly and safely space out the trailers. We would need infrastructure and utilities that are specifically designed for RVs, and the initial estimate from Public Works is approximately 8.2 million. The combined challenges of locating a large parcel, along with the significant costs, mean the administration is recommending an alternative use for the trailers. Next slide. Well, what's next? We're still working on that. The city does not have title to the trailers. San Jose's EOC has made a request to the state that they take back the trailers and reimburse the city for our costs. Alternatively, and perhaps most promising, we've identified a local nonprofit interested in taking the trailers and using them for small-scale, safe parking programs located throughout the county. And we're currently seeking guidance from the state on how to make that possible. And finally, although we're closing the site, I would like to acknowledge the tremendous hard work and collaboration of many teams. Specifically, the housing department, Kelly Hempel and Steve Pendleton, and our mighty team of building inspectors, Sean, Roger, and Guido. And then also our Public Works Department, Rich Ramirez, Ryan Rucker, and Walter Lynn. Abode services for providing outstanding onsite services, as well as taking a leap of faith with us. And then finally, the Office of Supportive Housing at the county, who worked so closely with us to make sure our residents were transferred safely to hotels. And this concludes the report on the trailer program.
We're complete as well.
Thanks, Jim.
I think Lee had a few more things to say.
Yep, sorry, having trouble unmute myself. So we wanted to end the presentation with a little bit of what our monthly, or what the month priorities look like for us, as well as how we intend to stay in communication with the council. And so over the month of July, we will be maintaining our emergency response at all levels that we have thus far, and continue to stop the spread of COVID-19 and support our most at-risk individuals. And this will mean a very active EOC, and focusing, continuing to focus on the key efforts around our food distribution program, all of the housing work that was just outlined, as well as continuing the local assistance effort around our residents, businesses, nonprofits, and continuing to fill out our community engagement strategies as we have a huge need to engage our community, but have the constraints of the COVID-19 crisis. How do we go ahead and engage that? And then, as well as continue to coordinate with the county related to the isolation program that was mentioned yesterday. And just, we will be continuing to work on our testing as well, just so that I can update you all. Getting texts from Rob Lloyd and Ann Tran that they had a very successful meeting with Verily this morning, and Verily will be moving their hours of operation to much later in the day, as well as adding a weekend to that site for additional testing. So that is the information I have. We will report back next week through info memo on that when appropriate. And then lastly, for the month ahead is our city organization and the Powered by People movement need to really continue to focus on the returning to the workplace and keeping our staff and the public safe as we continue that transition, and then start resuming some city services that had stopped with the continuity of operations plan, and ensuring those are delivered in a very safe and manageable way. Over the course of the month, we will not, currently don't have scheduled council meetings. The Emergency Operations Center will be producing an info memo to the mayor and council every Wednesday. In addition, as we start to take down the liaison branch and put that back into the organization, mayor and council engagement will come directly from the EOC directors, so both Kip and I, and we will both be accessible to you. So we will reach out to you when necessary, if anything comes up, but you should feel free and contact either Kip, myself, or Dave directly over the course of July. And then if anything else comes up in the way of new information, or anything operationally changes, or we have new guidance or need to bring back the council, the administration will request a special meeting of the council over the summer break. And so that concludes staff's presentation. We're available for questions, and I'll hand it back over to Dave if he has anything else to say.
Yeah, thanks, Lee. Thank you to the entire team. Appreciate all the hard work that's going on, and thank you, mayor and council. I know today's presentation was a little lengthy, but a lot of information to share with you all, and we're available for questions.
Thanks, Dave. I agree, a lot of important information, so I appreciate all the hard work, everyone jumping in, and I know I'll have some more questions shortly, but I just wanted to offer first a big thanks. I have been told by my team that Azelia and Mark and Bill and everybody in the building team have been incredibly responsive, and we appreciate them being so effective. And you know, on this trailers issue, I know this has gotten a lot of media attention, and people just do not understand how incredibly hard it is to help populations in our city who are struggling so much in so many ways, and all the extraordinary costs that are involved, infrastructure and everything else, to help somebody live in a way that is dignified. And we often try a lot of new approaches. I think we try more approaches probably than any city in the country, and we should because that's the spirit of this valley, and not all of them are going to work. And you know, the spirit is, we do everything we can because we know we don't have enough resources for everybody, and if we fail, we fail fast. We learn the lessons, we move forward. And I just want to say how proud I am that, you know, we embraced this challenge that was given to us, I think as Reagan mentioned, 24 hours' notice, and said, you're going to give us this, we're going to do everything we can to make it work. Turned out that those trailers were in pretty bad shape, and consumed enormous amount of our time and resources, and I think we recognized and appropriately sort of cutting the cord at this point. And if a community organization can step forward, I think it's great. And if not, we've got other approaches we know that do work, and we're going to keep driving on those. And so I just want to say thanks to everybody who worked so hard to try to make that happen, Reagan and Kelly, and many of the people she mentioned, Walter, Sean, Roger, Guido, many of others. That was a very heavy lift, and I'm just glad we're able to get everybody safely housed thereafter. All right, on to questions. We do have many members of the public who'd like to speak, so why don't we go to the public first, and then we'll come right back to the council. Again, these are comments specifically on the city manager's report and the elements that we've discussed here. First, Tessa. Welcome.
Hi, yes, thank you so much. Appreciate it. I guess one of the issues... Oh, you got it? You hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, good. Well, I think one of the issues that the community has been upset about in regards to, I think, the picking up of the trash. I think that we can do a lot better for the homeless. You know, we're not doing enough, and even this whole thing with these beautiful trailers saying that they didn't work out, I think is a real casualty of our community that we couldn't make it work out. It's like, come on, you know, that there, it's better than what they had, and we could really work on it more. I think it's a real shame that these beautiful trailers that provided housing couldn't be made into work, you know, and I think that we need to work harder at that, and that it wasn't a bad thing, and we shouldn't let that go. Those are beautiful facilities, and we should make it work out. And then they're saying that there were fires, and if there were police at that site continuously, I don't understand why there wasn't enough help. And that's the whole thing we're talking about with the police, and how much money we're spending on our police. And I'm saying that we need to de-gun, no guns for the police, and no cars for the police, and that they become walking around our neighborhood, solving problems, and we need more social workers. That's what we need. And so to not, you know, address, you had these people there, and making it work, I mean, we can make it work, and we're not working hard enough. And then the other neighbors were saying that we do need to pick up trash more regularly at the, and we, at the encampment sites. And what it is, and that's what Mayor Licardo hasn't wanted to support, and we need to support, is the, what they call, you know, sanctioned encampments, and make them work, and they haven't even been doing that. I was happy to see in one of our encampments on heading that there was the water washing, you know, system that was set up, and we need to set that up and make those work and keep the water there, and make these sanctioned encampments work.
Thank you. The person with the phone number ending 4630?
Hi, yes, that's me. Let me pull up my notes. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. So I just want to start by saying, I am also very disappointed about the RVs weren't able to work. Based on the presentation, it does sound like most of the damages were like cosmetic, meaning they had like cabinets or missing beds. It wouldn't be that expensive for the city to provide these beds, and cabinets can be very easily woodwork, and that would have been a great way for the city to help smaller businessmen who could help with that. Additionally, with the plumbing, plumbing services are not that expensive, and the city could have, you know, went to a business... and the city could have, you know, went to a business person to help. Additionally, you mentioned three times that the generators ran out of fuel. I, as a citizen, don't understand how that's possible if you guys had two people who are working 24 hours a day. That is an oversight based on the people who are supposed to be supervising the position. So it's really a fault to them for not looking at the levels of the generators. Let's see. Also, you guys mentioned that it was laborious for people to walk to a shower, and a lot of the RVs couldn't have showers. You know, it was an opportunity for us to have homes for these people. And honestly, a lot of these homeless people are being able, like, they have to walk, you know, for constant, like, 24 hours a day. So it's not, it's not, it's not a good excuse to say, oh, they had to walk to showers when they sit around the streets. That's all they have to do. You mentioned that wildfires being an issue. Well, in our areas where wildfires happen, I have chronic asthma, and, you know, that's something that someone in the local area is going to have to deal with. Let's see. Also, I find that...
Thank you. The person with the phone number ending 2154, welcome.
Morning. Well, what I'm tired of hearing of is excuses. I think that eventually we have to hold the people that are responsible accountable, and I feel like all I'm hearing is excuses. You need to own up to the responsibility. All I'm hearing from the mayor, all I'm hearing from the council members, especially D6, voting for the same things as the mayor, are excuses. And it's time for District 6 and District 4 to vote for new council members this fall. District 6, District 4, you have the chance to make a difference this fall.
Thank you. Blair?
Hi, I guess comment if you don't hear my voice, otherwise I'll just continue here. Thank you. To try to speak to two items that speak directly to COVID-19 efforts from the consent calendar today. With item 2.2, there is a final adoption of ordinances that will include a small cell permitting program with Public Works. And items 2.13 to 2.15 is asking for more fire department personnel. I hope we are at a time to ask for better control of natural disasters at the local level, and I hope we are prepared for the fire dangers in both the East Side Hills and the Santa Cruz Mountains for the next few years. To offer again, for virtual public meeting efficiency, you can have 15-minute periods of councilperson speaking, with then an additional five-minute blocks asked for and approved by the council motion process. And from the Planning Commission interviews yesterday, post Spanish and Vietnamese translation should be a simple process to be included in virtual meetings. It has been a lot of years since the John Kennedy years of the early 1960s, yet we still need to better consider how both languages need to be included for most of all local government-sponsored community meetings. Thank you. I had a couple other comments. How much time do I have left? About 30 seconds?
That's right.
Thank you. With about 30 seconds, I just wanted to offer my condolences about the trailer situation in the Happy Hollow area. You know, I really, I'm practicing, trying to learn to practice the ideas of better communication, and just a better communication could really help out the issue for everyone, I feel. And to simply note, I've noticed that Happy Hollow seems like a good beginning interim spot for activities and projects, but it's not a long-term thing. And we keep trying to make it a long-term thing, and for some reason, it just doesn't quite work. I wish it could, but maybe that's to note that, you know, Happy Hollow area, that region can be a short-term place for projects, but not long-term. Thank you.
Blair, Juan? Welcome.
Hi, my name is Juan Estrada. My topic is illegal dumping at or next to homeless encampments. The community appreciates all the efforts to aid the unhoused. We also want solutions for those poor souls. We want everyone to have a home. We want them to have a home that is free of safe and healthy, and health hazards. So we have to understand that we also have an illegal dumping crisis. I know it was referenced. I'm not talking about trash at encampments. We need a plan to end illegal dumping at or next to encampments. Over 700 online petitions have been submitted, asking the city to ensure that the homelessness response team be provided with the resources it needs to be able to visit encampments within one business day, to offer outreach and services, to clear the locations of any health hazards and illegal dumping within a few days as allowed by law. The situation at many locations is a dire health and safety hazard. If you haven't visited encampments, please do so. I regularly do so in East San Jose. And what I find is that illegal dumping builds up over time. It is not usually the residents of the encampment who are bringing the legal dumping. They actually don't even have the means to do so. Illegal dumpers are victimizing both our neighborhoods and the unhoused. We need you to address this crisis. For example, a group of community members in East San Jose filled up a 20-cubic-yard dumpster with illegal dumping last week. It had been there for at least four months. It built up over the four months. There were no excuses, just action. We were able to clean up most of it. We now need the city to do its part, clean up illegal dumping at encampments, stop putting it off. This pandemic is not the time to allow health and safety hazards in neighborhoods to grow unabated. If anything, perhaps consider providing opportunities for community members to help you clean it up, so that we can all be part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Morris?
Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak with you. My name is Morris Chubb, and I'm a member of the Local Impact Committee of San Jose Rotary. I'm also a board member of We Hope, that provides showers and laundry through the Dignity on Wheels project. I want to applaud the city for taking this opportunity, this unfortunate opportunity of COVID-19 to start to provide the homeless with, the unsheltered homeless with services that they need. The Rotary has been considering, prior to COVID-19, to start providing those services to the homeless, because we realize that, you know, they are really the un cared-for population. At this point in time, we are considering coming alongside the city in what they're doing with sanitation needs for the homeless, and providing tents and other things like that. So in general, we are, we feel that what the city is doing is a good start, and we want to put our shoulder to the, to your wheel and keep this project moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your partnership, Morris. Paul? Welcome.
Good morning, Mayor Licardo, and saludos to the Chicano Five. The, if you gave me a budget of 100 grand, 20 Mexicans, some carne asada, and some Modelo, and then you started involving the community to where people would go there and make it a community event to refurbish these trailers, I guarantee you that they would be in top shape in about 90 days. And I do not exaggerate, and I don't think anybody on this council would challenge me on that. That's number one. Number two is that I've been warning the council about this for months. Okay, back in December, I started talking about this, that the only thing that is necessary in order for this problem to continue to perpetuate into the future is to do nothing. Because when you neglect to do something by an act of omission, you are actually doing something. All I heard today from these people talking about the EOC, all they were doing was they were articulating symptoms. An example, if I have a cold, and how do you know I have a cold? You know I have a cold because I'm sneezing, I'm coughing, I'm aching, I got a runny nose. Those are symptoms. That's not the cold. Those are symptoms. Obviously, illegal dumping, all of this trash, all of this, like, real superficial, like, honestly, I mean, it was pissing me off that I was hearing people talk about this, like, this was really actually the problem. The problem is incompetency and eptness and an unwillful neglect of this problem. And I'm kind of tired of it. I'm sick of over here, you know, constantly affirming that position with the council. I would like to extend a thank you to Councilman Peralis. I've read your op-ed twice in Spotlight. I think it is just, I think it is accurate, and you are the one councilmember man that will go out to the community and interact with the community, take the blows, and try to pivot and try to really do something for the city. So gracias, homie. That's it. I'm out.
Thank you. Gail?
Hi, good morning. I'm sitting here shaking my head of the things I've been hearing. A couple of items, they are abating. You are abating. I have postings. You kick people out of different areas. I've been there. You are abating unhoused folks where you said you weren't. That is not acceptable. And where are they to go? Well, next door to another community. Please stop this abating. Like you said, you were, you are abating. Number two, a couple of things. The porta-potties and the washing stations are probably the best thing you've ever done, having those at those encampments. I'm out there every day, and people are so happy to have that porta-potty. Also, getting the dumpsters is a great priority. We need those dumpsters. The places where you're going to be putting them are good places. But we need to stop the abating. Most of the folks I talked to want to get into the motels, but they're not 60, they're not 65, and they don't have symptoms, and so they can't get into any of these motels. Plus, the hotline is a joke. It doesn't work. I've called it many times. They don't call people back. So the follow-up of what's going on is not happening. And I sit there shaking my head because nobody is following up or making sure things are going right. They are not going right. And there are many folks out there that want to be into the motels, but aren't given the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerome? Jerome, your device is still muted. If you could unmute your device?
Okay, sorry. So my issue is with the COVID hotline number, and the individual who was doing the report who said that homeless people were refusing to go into shelters because they couldn't get into hotels. That's absurd. I dealt with the COVID hotline number for a friend who was out on the streets, who wasn't allowed back into a shelter run by Home First. He was out on the streets. I saw him at Walmart. You know, I called the COVID hotline. It took, it was back and forth for about, you know, three or four phone calls. I called them around nine o'clock in the morning, and at three o'clock in the afternoon, they responded with that they had no spaces available in any shelters. You know, I don't, I didn't understand that, because if it's an emergency shelter, then why don't you have any space available? And then I asked them, well, since you don't have any space available, can he be placed in a hotel? And they said, no, because he didn't have all the COVID conditions. So I myself ended up putting this individual in a hotel that night, and it took them five days to be placed to an emergency shelter. So saying that people don't want to be placed at the shelters and rather go in the hotels, that's ridiculous. And I don't understand why the trailers were sent to San Jose instead of going to the county itself in a 24-hour period. So if you guys could please explain why those trailers went to San Jose with less than 24 hours' notice, instead of going to the county, who could have probably better handled the trailer situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Moda G? You're still on mute. If you could unmute yourself?
I just wanted to note that we all see the time, so you can tell that some people are going a full sentence over their time, while other people are getting stepped on at the last seconds. Please stop making unhoused people sound picky. They are cautious. They don't want to be in shelters. They feel more vulnerable to COVID there. It's a game of COVID roulette. Many of the items mentioned that were broken were cosmetic in the trailers by unhoused standards. Something with a roof, walls, and a door is a big step up from a tent that is open to the elements and to violence, particularly for women. Sam's right. This did fail fast, and it was largely due to human error, choosing the wrong clientele, not keeping generators filled, and I can go on and on and on. Where was the mention of the county's interest in taking over the trailers, having them inspected first? I didn't hear anything about that. Both Dave and Cindy have been, made their interest clear, so I'd like that to be addressed. And again, it just seems like at every turn where there was a decision that was made, hey, what clientele could we take? The ones that are set up to fail? Or another kind of clientele that might be more mobile? We're going to take these. Let's have people who don't keep generators full of gas. Yeah, let's pick those people. I mean, it was just one fail after another. Allowing community to reuse them would be fantastic. And where was the mention of Felipe tiny homes? I saw the other tiny homes. I didn't see anything about Felipe. What is the installation date for those? And what is the grand opening? And again, what will happen to the people surrounding those camps? There's over 100 people living there in the worst conditions in all of San Jose, and we fear that they are all going to be swept, and it's going to happen at some time when we're not there to see it, because Sam doesn't want those poor, dirty people there for the grand opening of those tiny homes.
Thank you. Saskia?
Hello, my name is Saskia Mick. I am a constituent who lives in downtown San Jose. I'll try to be quick. Recently, a couple weeks ago, I was with a group of volunteers who were helping homeless people at an encampment. I believe it was on Santa Clara Street, right by the AC Hotel downtown. We were there because there were posters put up by the city saying that the encampment members were trespassing, and that they would be kicked off, and that they could retrieve their belongings from a storage unit, where the storage unit is closed due to COVID. So when you call them, no one answers. Also, these posters were only in English, despite Santa Clara County having a population that is 36% foreign-born and a huge population that are ESL speakers. We were giving out backpacks and supplies to help the encampment members in case they had to leave. All that was happening was a cleanup, but they were told that they were going to be pushed out of the encampment. It was unclear, poorly thought out. Multiple people came up to me begging for water and begging me to contact the city, because they said the city turned off the drinking water. I understand that having to close water fountains due to COVID makes sense, but you have to make sure people have drinking water. It's been over 80 degrees pretty consistently. I had multiple young men come up to me who could barely speak to me because they were so dehydrated. Um, you, I appreciate the plans you are making. And the porta-potty, sorry, I'm getting emotional. And the porta-potty is being put out, but you have to ensure that people have water to drink, and that they're getting clear information about where they can safely stay during a pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia? Cynthia, you're still muted. If you could unmute your device? Cynthia, please unmute your device, and we'll be able to hear you. Cynthia, your device is still muted. Okay, I'm sorry, Cynthia. It appears there may be a problem with the device. The person with the phone number ending 8705? Welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hi, my name is Megan. I am a constituent in Japan Town. I appreciate the opportunity to get these back in my perspective, and also to hear the other community members, and appreciate their time today to participate in this meeting during the workday and to speak their voice. I just want to share that it's really surprising, living in San Jose, to hear how quickly the cart was put before the horse. And I agree with the gentleman who shared that we're just identifying symptoms. As an educator, a public school educator, I work closely on individual peer responses to individual folks, individual students, to provide a roadmap that is... to, um, individual folk, individual students to provide a roadmap that is individualized for each person. What I didn't hear was the percentage of folks that were housing insecure due to specific, like mental health, mental health challenges, substance abuse problems, um, et cetera. And so I'm not hearing really a, um, individual pathway and support and a roadmap to support the hierarchy of needs for folks, um, to ultimately, um, become self efficient and able to, um, not be, you know, vulnerable. And I'd love for, um, more opportunity to kind of hear how the housing authority has engaged with the community of folks that are housing insecure to help and partner with them. One of the things that I would recommend as a public educator is, uh, mental health focused social workers, um, to provide again a pathway to folks to see what they need. Um, having walked around downtown, I just hope that the council has also walked around downtown, especially in the evening. The number of vulnerable folks out in the, excuse me, in the community is really dire. Um, please engage with these folks. They're your constituents as well. Um, I also agree with the gentleman when he stated that, um, the community would have been really willing to help. I know for myself, I was out, deemed an essential worker distributing food.
Uh, team, welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, hi, um, thank you for letting me voice my concern. So I think, um, my issue was something that I heard in Maryla Carter's comment after the presentation, uh, where he said that, quote, "It's very difficult to help homeless populations because the budget can be tight." Um, please correct me if that was wrong. But here are some budgets in the, uh, some figures in the budget that don't really accurately reflect this. Um, for instance, there's a one point seven million increase in municipal golf courses. The police is maintaining a four forty million plus budget, while Public Works was cut by fourteen million, Parks and Recreation by ten million and Libraries by one million. So of course I understand that there are budget cuts due to COVID. But yet you are increasing golf funding and maintaining an insanely high police budget. So if you ask the council are proposing to cater to the fancy desires of the wealthy by increasing golf funding, while you complain that the budget to help the homeless is tight, I ask you to reconsider what your priorities are and whether you are genuinely serving the folks as you claim. Since I have time remaining, I like to echo the concerns of other community members. The damages were cosmetic. Those in charge of oversight were not duly doing their job since gas ran out three times and wrongfully evicting people from shelters. So don't get me wrong, I appreciate the city's efforts, but I think you as the city council can do much, much better. And it would really help if you did provide the community any opportunities to get involved since we also want to, um, help in these efforts. So thank you.
Thank you, Vivian?
Hi, uh, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful, I'd just like to echo the concerns of other constituents who have already called in. I, I have also noticed that abatements have continued during COVID nineteen, even though the city has promised that they would not. I, I think this is a moral outrage to kick people out of where they are currently sheltered during a global pandemic, uh, that is especially contagious. I, I am aware that budgets are very complicated and a lot of the city programs that are dedicated to providing for the unhoused are underfunded. But I think given the recent trends with the San Jose Police Department and other budgetary concerns, as other people have brought up with, with golf courses, um, I think we really do need to rethink our priorities as a city and direct money to programs that actually efficiently address problems. We have seen again and again that policing, abatements, these things do not actually address the concerns of, of the unhoused people in San Jose, who are, as people have said, also your constituents. And I think it's time that we redirect our resources as a city to solutions that actually work. You know, like providing more housing for the unhoused, whether it's in a hotels or on fixing the trailers. Um, and of course, expanding COVID nineteen testing. Thank you so much for hearing my comments, I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. All right, Jordan, welcome.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Can you? Hi. My name is Jordan. Uh, I had some things that I wanted to bring up. One is there, it seems like there's kind of a issue with the outreach of this city council meeting. Um, I'm looking on your, uh, media, media, and I don't see any links to this. I, I'm just glad that I found it because I think this is all great information that we should get up to more people. And then, uh, with more communication, I think that from hearing everybody talk, that you would have gotten a lot more, uh, community, uh, activism, volunteers and people would have came out. And I want to, uh, come out and help out these homeless. I live in downtown and so I directly see the homeless every day, but I have no idea how to help them out. Um, a couple of other things is, uh, I think that with the housing is a great idea. And you guys did try your best, but I think that, uh, like everybody says, there's a lot of excuses being said. Uh, the military does it all the time when we're deployed, we do it. Uh, and we house hundreds of hundreds of airmen and we do it humanely. I think that maybe you're not calling on the right experience and the people that have already done it. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. We just need to find our, uh, find the experience that's already there. It's there. You could definitely do this and we can continue to do this. We've already spent the money, why not? And then, uh, the hotline was a really good idea. I thought that was a really good idea. But how are these homeless people calling this hotline? Do they have phones? That's kind of ridiculous. But I think it's a good idea. It's sad to hear that it's not working. And then on the police and their cost, um, we have a helicopter flying over our head every night. And that is, uh, annual budget of at least five hundred thousand dollars that we can cut out of the budget. I think that the helicopter is not needed and I tried calling to figure out why and why is, what its uses are and Googling it. But it doesn't have any specific information of why the helicopter is used and what, what, what it's actually used for and what.
Thank you. Phone number, uh, person with the phone number six, nine, seven, eight, welcome.
Hello, uh, can y'all hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hello, um, as both a citizen and concerned, a community member, I want to echo what everybody else has said. But I also want to ask you and, uh, everybody that's listening here, I mean, is the council here? Do you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. So based off of all the community concerns, especially one that struck me was why haven't, why didn't you get the community involved in helping out? I want to ask you, instead of talking at you, I want to ask you, do these, uh, concerns, were these reaching you? And if so, um, are, will you take these, um, these, these voices into action? And, and what are the, what are the current thoughts stirring around your head on, on potential solutions? I just want to hear like, uh, something from you guys.
This is, um, this time is for public comments, uh, so please continue.
Well, I'm gonna finish my time by saying, if, well, if anything, something, what, that will help the community and you as your, as your own political careers is listening to the voices of constituents that you guys have influence over. So I'm not here to yell at you, although I do have high emotions. Uh, I just urge you both as smart politicians and as human beings to listen to the community that you directly affect. And please, after this conference call, whether it's social media or something, put out your thoughts and, and get the opinions of, of us as a community. You know, we will, we'll be grateful for that because I feel that there's a disconnect right now between politicians and the community.
Thank you very much for your comments. Nassim?
Hi, thanks for, uh, giving this opportunity for people to express their extreme concerns. My name is Nassim Noor, I live in District Four and I'm a council member with the Green Party of Santa Clara County. First of all, I'm appalled to hear the city blame the actual victims of your own failed policies and lack of planning. This trailer fiasco is not the first time that the city has utterly failed to use our public resources and our public funds to actually accomplish the goals that we as a community demand. We need to house or unhouse. I don't want my neighbors living in the extreme poverty and danger that the city is subjecting them to. Number one, this trailer fiasco is not the first time that actually the city has managed to waste public money in a secret, unplanned way and without any public and community involvement. And it's not going to be the last unless you stop. You're hearing the community express not just a concern about the wastefulness and the lack of opportunity and the loss of, uh, opportunity, but also it's an everyday health concern to our neighbors. The Unhoused Response Group, a small community group, managed to distribute over three thousand backpacks with COVID essential items in it with very little help from local government. If the community can do that, you must engage the community in addressing these ongoing issues. So the trailer fiasco is just an example. I think it's going to happen again unless the city becomes responsive. District Four Representative, District Six Representative, hear these calls because this is what the community needs right now. So as leaders, step up. It's very unfortunate that it's gotten to a point of the loss of trust and respect for our representatives. So please address this issue.
Thank you. Jessalyn?
Hi, um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
I want to echo, uh, what other community members have said that I'm horrified at the way the city has mishandled this trailer project. Um, I cannot believe that the city is continuing abatements in spite of their promise to stop them. Um, I've been there, I've seen the flyers, I live in downtown San Jose. So I don't know why the city is continuing to lie about this when you're continuing to do abatements and push people out of the only shelter that they have when they're in vulnerable and dangerous conditions. As other people have said already on this call, the community is here and willing to help. People have been going out every day, have been giving out all kinds of resources to unhoused people and acting like there's no other solution, uh, to this trailer program is ridiculous. These are, a lot of these trailers are still usable and could still be doing things for the city. Um, I also want to bring up the fire that happened at the, um, encampment at the, on the Alameda River Parkway by the two eighty that happened during an abatement. I want to know why there are fires happening during abatements that again, like the city isn't giving any resources or helping people in any way. Your hotline is a joke. This storage solution, solution is a joke. As another person already mentioned, people can't even get access to the resources that the city is pretending to give out. So you need to do better on this.
Thank you. Next speaker is Annie.
Yep, um, I am Annie with Silicon Valley DSA. First, all y'all, please turn on your cameras and at least pay the public that much respect. You're supposed to represent us, at least pretend to care. Second, uh, all y'all at, at City Council, think that you're dealing with the symptom of the problem and that will solve the problem. So dumping is most often a result of people being unhoused because clearly unhoused people don't have, um, the same types of trash collection that housed people do. If you in fact address the symptom of this problem by investing in public housing instead of the police, people will no longer be unhoused and will have trash collection services. Housing people is in fact a great way to stop illegal dumping. Furthermore, when I hear, well, the trailers didn't have cabinets, the trailers had bad plumbing, et cetera, all I hear is, well, we don't care enough about unhoused people to invest, invest the money in housing the unhoused. You could have used the money and fixed the problem. This is in direct contrast, in fact, to last week where you approved almost half a billion dollars for the police department, mind you. The police are worth half a billion dollars apparently, but unhoused people aren't worth a few hundred bucks to fix new, to fix the cabinets and put in some new plumbing. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian, welcome.
Hello, my name is Brian Parkman. I am a resident of District Six. I do want to keep my comments short. Um, what this whole process has shown is a very, it's a heavily systematic failure of the city of San Jose. The resources do exist to house the houseless, but given the priorities of the city of San Jose, they do not appear to be relevant at all. I have nothing else to say, I yield the rest of my time.
Uh, Will, welcome.
Mic check, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi guys, I'm in, uh, District Three. I, uh, a couple of things. I, I do want to, uh, thank the city for pushing through the additional three, uh, affordable housing developments that they're already working on. I know, I don't think that gets enough, uh, attention. I know we've got two right now in District Three and I, I really appreciate the extra three. I think of public private partnerships are the best way to get homeless people off the street, um, long-term. Uh, short-term though, I do, and this might be an unpopular opinion, I do think, uh, that the abatements need to continue. Uh, the, the small encampments that we have around our neighborhoods, uh, have only grown. They're becoming like little shanties, they're attracting more people. Uh, it's really unsanitary. It sounds like there are a lot of resources out there for these people and, um, we have to get them to where they need to go. And if abatements help make that happen, then we need to continue doing that. Um, additionally, abandoned vehicle, uh, abatements are not being, um, uh, fulfilled and that's causing problems as well. Uh, we, we had to, we spent like two weeks making phone calls, sending in requests to get a, to get a vehicle that was clearly busted and then, uh, I don't know, some, some hoods came in and smashed some windows on it and stuff, it was a big mess. But, um, yeah, otherwise, uh, that's it, don't need any more time, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Kristin?
Hi, um, I just wanted to, um, talk about the abatements that you said were not happening. And I just wanted to clarify, uh, that if you're trying to use the excuse that, oh, it was just a cleanup crew, which some of them did end up being, um, that I, that I went to. But even if, even if only the cleanup crew was sent to, you know, to pick up, you know, trash or, or unused property, the sign that was posted on, at the encampments literally said, and I'm reading it right now off, off a picture of the flyer, it says, "You are trespassing and will be subject to criminal prosecution if you remain. You must remove all of your property from this location by seven AM and then on the date." So if, if this is, in fact, if you are not categorizing this as, um, an encampment sweep, then this is basically, you're using scare tactics to try to force, force homeless people to preemptively leave where they are. You know, and, um, because they fear, you know, the police and being prosecuted. And even with this, on the first day I was there, on, um, Monday, June twenty-second, at one of them, um, somebody was arrested and, you know, and now they're going to have a criminal record because of these encampment sweeps. So it's not, it, first of all, they're not, not happening. And it's not having no negative effects on the homeless people. And if you're not, and if you're not technically calling them encampment sweeps, then the posters are definitely trying to be used as scare tactics to, um, to remove homeless people from the areas.
Thank you, Kristen. Uh, the person with the phone number five, one, four, zero?
Yeah, I mean, there needs to be more done about the homeless. There's, you know, the, where the Pier One Imports is, they set up a homeless camp there. There's, uh, you just see homeless people wandering aimlessly around, talking to one another, talking to themselves, not to one another. I, I went to the Safeway the other day, they had a hostile, uh, homeless guy in front of the Safeway and bran them there and have an expressway. The, they're constantly inside the stores causing problems. Uh, the, they're constantly inside the stores causing problems. I don't know what the answer is, but it's definitely not what's going on now. Building more housing for them, giving them more things just attracts more and more of them. Happened in San Francisco where everyone moved their, uh homeless people were moving from all over the country to get a free hotel room there. You need to tell us what your, what your real plans are going to be because the ones that you've had aren't working.
Thank you, Molly. Welcome. Molly, your device appears to be muted right now.
Hi, I'm Molly McLeod. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Um, I'm a resident of district nine and I want to talk, uh, start by going over the access needs. Um, first of all, when I've called in right now, um, I see the countdown, one minute forty seven seconds and counting. Um, what you don't see, anybody who's communicating um through this civic participation is the item number, the description. So you're putting barriers um to the participation of members of the public. Additionally, not knowing when, like if you're in, in person, you'll get a list of these are the next five people. Um, that's something that's easy to do. Um, if these types of access needs were considered, if the city of San Jose was actively working on disability justice and access needs, then um it would have made sense that knowing that bigger people, older people, people with mobility issues would have needs that would not be met in the trailer. So over one million dollars were in effect, could have been better used if there had been a welcoming environment for people with disabilities. I know and have been speaking up on this for quite a while. As a retiree from the city of San Jose after twenty one years, I served as the first access and functional needs person in the EOC at the PG&E shut offs, which are coming again. And in December, um, Whit O'Brien, which I also see is on the list um to have contract renewal, um, had no information whatsoever about the best after action report called Getting It Wrong, An Indictment With A Blueprint For Getting It Right. Um, what I've asked for and did in my exit interview with the city manager was to ask that everybody, all city employees um see the rooted in rights videos about disaster preparedness. We can do better than this. We're squandering money and I'm very sad and angry.
Thank you. Now returning to the council. And just on the last point, um, Tony, I know that after council process submitted his memorandum, we talked about submit um identifying items on the screen. Is that right?
Yes, we're looking into that. We could, we couldn't get anything in place for Tuesday, but hopefully we'll have a solution by August.
By, by our next move. Okay, great. Thank you, Tony. Okay, returning to the council, Councilmember Jimenez.
Thank you, mayor. I have a few questions, uh, first and foremost about the trailers. I, I, I think is uh, as you're hearing from the residents and read articles in the, in the, in the, just the newspaper and other, and other such places, obviously this is viewed as a failure, but, but I do appreciate uh staff coming forward and really adding more color to the, to the, to the challenges associated with what happened. So I very much appreciate that because I had a lot of questions that I think to a certain extent were answered. But I do have a few additional ones and one is, uh, I think, uh, when that slide was up, there was uh uh, mentioned that the state, we're going to seek, try, attempt to seek reimbursement from the state. And so what I'm curious about is what is the likelihood of that being successful? And what would that amount be? I, I, I was trying to run the calculation when the numbers were up, but I don't know exactly how much we've expended as a city. So, so I guess the question is, is it likely and what, what is that amount that we would be seeking from the state? And that's for, I don't know, Reagan or Jim or Jackie, anyone?
Yeah, you know, why don't I jump in, council member, uh, Jim Orpall here, and then, you know, maybe Reagan or Lee can jump in as well. Um, I, I'll be honest, I don't know how likely it is, but certainly we felt like we got trailers that really were not worthy for habitation. And there's a tremendous amount of work to try and get them to that condition. Um, and, and we think they should share in, in getting to that shape. Um, so we're, we're making the request and, you know, we're trying to address it, uh, but I, I don't have any uh kind of knowledge or experience on whether they may or may not do that. I don't know if Lee or Reagan has anything to add on that.
This is Jackie. I'll jump in. So when we received the trailers, the state had made a commitment that they were going to make them all habitable. Um, that was something that they had said that they would do when they turned the trailers over. And part of the issue was the time that it was going to take for them to take over all of the repairs turned out to be quite lengthy. So that's the reason why we think we should be able to go back to them to say the can, um, one of the conditions when you gave this to us was that you would fix them and you were unable to do it in a timely fashion. So those would be the costs that we're going to try to re, get, seek reimbursement on.
Um, you know what, what I'm also curious about is I assume those trailers were uh items that the state already had sort of in their, in their, in their possession. They weren't necessarily uh purchased or anything with any care of Zack money or any type of money that the state got, right? These were just trailers that were hanging out in, in a state parking lot somewhere. Is, is that?
Yeah, they had been used for uh previous disaster work and, and they were in storage. And the reason they were in disrepair for was because they had been in storage for such a long time and had not been used.
Mm-hmm. And, and when they reached out to us to say, you know, I, I know it's been, you know, said, and I, I assume that's, you know, it's actually the way it happened, but twenty four hours, I mean, was it, was it, who did they call? I mean, was it, was it you, Jackie, and say, hey, we got these trailers, uh, but we need to get them to you like tomorrow type of thing? I mean, what, what was? Can you talk a little bit about sort of that uh and, and where, how that, how that transpired and, and whether we knew whether these trailers were in disrepair or did they tell us? Listen, they're ready to be uh lived in, uh, they're ready to go, everything's fine, and then we get them and they're not, or sort, what was the? What were the, if you can walk me through some of those challenges or, or what the expectation was when we accepted them?
And uh, that's probably better for me to handle. The uh, the, the request actually came in, I, I believe, at, at first uh directly from the governor's office into the, the city's IGR team. And we quickly kind of moved that from Cal OES to the emergency operations center. Yeah, about the trailers. And I think at that point in time, they said, we are, we are going to be giving these to cities. Um, we'd like you to take receipt of these. Um, and it was our understanding that they were all ready to use at the time that we were told that we were going to get these trailers. Um, they said that they would be down in a week or two, and then we recalled several days later that they were en route and that we needed to find a place immediately. So the, the communication from Cal OES and the state, um, at least in those initial conversations was not uh clear or apparent. Um, but Jackie is right, as we got them and, and saw the kind of state of those, we, we did work through with Cal OES and, and, and some folks through those problems. So, you know, to, to Jim's point, I don't know what the likelihood is of reimbursement. However, I'm as we've continued those conversations with Cal OES on the, on the state of those trailers, I'm somewhat optimistic that they would work with us on that.
Okay. And, and was part of that decision to accept them, uh, I mean, the way you've sort of described it, Lee, it seems like they had these trailers and they were going to give them to someone. So if we were interested, we needed to step up relatively quickly. So was that part of the rationale to saying, you know, lifting up our hand or saying, we'll take them?
Yes, yes, that, that, that is absolutely. I mean, if you will recall how long ago we accepted these, it was one of the very first council meetings that we had in the wing room, actually. I think where Kip, um, Police Chief Garcia and I presented to you. And, um, you know, I can remember uh, a lot of us had just gotten out of a meeting with the county before we had presented to you, where they were talking about hospital capacity and the need for, for, for takedown space. Um, and the picture was, was grim. So at that point in time, the likelihood of getting additional capacity that might be needed seemed like a logical um and, and needed resource that we would need, especially because we thought that they were ready to use.
Lee, I would add that the surge capacity in hospitals and the field respite center at the San Andreas Convention Center, the county was interested in potentially using this as a step down facility where somebody who was not as ill and not needing as extensive of medical attention could be housed in one of these trailers. They'd still be isolated. So in the early stages of the COVID response, it was very fluid, trying to figure out kind of the nature of it, what surge, hospital surge needs may have been. And so that was obviously part of, not obvious, that was part of a consideration in, in making a quick decision on accepting trailers.
Okay. All right. I, I guess another question that comes to mind for me is, you know, I, I think it's important to be very transparent with, with, with the community, right? And, and so I'll ask this question in that spirit is that that we as a city, in my mind, and even as elected official, shouldn't be shy about saying we got it wrong, you know, we, we, we made a mistake or, or, or not, right? That we did, we, we made decisions with the best information we had at the moment and, you know, sometimes they pan out, sometimes they don't, we sort of fail forward, fail quickly, as the mayor stated, which I agree with. Um, in retrospect, uh, was there an earlier? I guess I'm just wondering if there, if we could have pulled the trigger earlier to say, these aren't working before actually moving some people in and then asking them, you know, to go out or sending some to motels and stuff. Like, was there an earlier decision point that could have been made to, to say that these just weren't going to function as we anticipated or going to work as well as we thought? Without expending some of this money that obviously we've expended uh as it relates to this? And may, and, and by the way, before you answer, maybe that analysis hasn't been done yet, but I think in, in everything that we do as a city and, and where, especially where things don't maybe go our way, I think it's important to reevaluate and think through sort of where where maybe some of the hangups were, where we could have uh made a decision earlier and such. So I'm wondering if that analysis has been done or, or, and if you're ready and willing to share that now, uh, or, or you think that, you know, after action reports, so to speak, it has yet to be done?
Uh, I'm, I'm, council member, I think, um, thanks, Jim. Um, so I think, I think you're, it's uh fair what you're saying and certainly uh, I'm not aware that we've completed analysis said, hey, you know, this is a, a, a point in time where we should have made a different decision. Um, you know, we were very focused on moving on, on all fronts to be able to support the needs of the community. But yes, we should always be looking at how and what we did and, and as we come forward later on with reports on, on our performance, you know, we need to be accountable for that performance and we need to be open to, to how we do things better in the future. So that's always part of it. Um, but I'm not of aware of a, you know, um, a report that we've been able to generate at this point that says, well, you know, we made a, 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 a poor decision uh given the information that we had. Jim, I don't think anything went ahead. No, I think that's right, Dave. I, I think as we received them in a very short period of time and then figured out what it would take to stand them up in a safe way, it became extensive. You start getting into it and you realize all the different elements of setup and then repair that it was required to do. And we still had needs. We had needs for unsheltered people. The nature of the COVID and hospital situation was still dynamic. Um, and, and so turning away from that decision early on would have been difficult to do because we didn't seem to have control of the situation. Um, and so we continued to try and stand them up in as efficient and safe ways we possibly could. Um, you know, might there be a couple of points along the way we could have uh cut losses? Possibly, and, and maybe we'll figure that out, but um when, when we're dealing with the unsheltered population size that we're dealing with and the uncertainty of the COVID situation, it's hard to make those decisions. And I'll, I'll just, I'll put it very, you know, being involved in them, um, I think we tried to make the best decisions we could. And ultimately, uh, when Reagan and Jackie recommended to me, uh, and to Dave, that we are having too many challenges. This is not an effective or efficient way. There are better ways to do it. We made that decision and I absolutely stand behind that decision.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. That, that's an honor. I, I, that, that sounds reasonable to me. Uh, but that's all I ask is, is because what folks are, you know, what I've heard from the community, there, there, be it emails or, or messages on Facebook and things of that nature, uh, to me directly is saying, you know, especially because we're building out some of these bridge housing communities in my district, right? About upwards of two hundred people or so. And folks are already asking, oh, is this what it's going to be like? Is this what we're going to do? Is this how we're going to, you know, on and on, right? Which is not, is, is an apples or oranges comparison, as I explained to them. This is uniquely different. Uh, but, but, and I understand that this is a very, it was, and, and I guess it continues to be a very dynamic situation. I just, I just always think it's just very, it's good to have an honest assessment of what happened and, but everything you described, you know, I, I understand, I can understand that. I think any, any objective person can look at what you just described and, and, and understand that. And so I appreciate that answer. Um, the other question I had about the trailer is, uh, I know there was a mention that, uh, there's a nonprofit that's interested and maybe these will serve as safe parking sort of, I, I assume like stationary sort of, um, because I think these are trailers that are towed, right? These are fully functioning with a sort of engine in the front, right? These are all towed and such. And so do we envision that these are just going to be stationary, like at a, let's just say, for example, we have Southside Community Center that's a uh safe parking location. Um, that theoretically, one of these trailers can pop into that parking lot and, and remain there indefinitely until this, you know, while this program's ongoing? Uh, is that sort of what we're envisioning?
Uh, this is Jackie. I'm going to let Reagan take the question, but I just wanted to say, no, we don't envision these popping up at Southside or any city owned facility. Uh, the request was for a nonprofit to utilize the trailers in a non-city locations, but I'm going to let Reagan finish that response.
So that, that's correct. It's a nonprofit that's interested in using the trailers for safe parking sites at privately run sites and they would participate in our current safe parking program that requires a simple registration with the housing department. But again, they would be run on private sites, primarily faith communities.
Okay, all right. Um, the, the other question I had just about the money going back, and I should have asked this earlier, but as it relates to the money that's been expended on this whole, on the trailer concept and trying to, you know, house folks and obviously we're going the other direction now, but, you know, I know we recently approved the budget. Um, what I'm curious about is, is any of that money that we've expended worth or, or have the ability to be reimbursed or? I, I know there's a lot of accounting that goes on there, but I wonder if there's anyone on the line that can talk to the possibility of uh getting any of that money reimbursed or, or covered by any type of action that's taking place at the state level or, or, or the federal level or?
Yeah, count, councilor, I, I don't anticipate it being reimbursed, but we are using relief funds for it. So it is not something that, yeah.
Okay, all right, very good. Uh, so, so just a few other questions. Uh, this is about the, the rapid and the illegal dumping. Uh, Jim, I know you're taking the lead on that. Very much appreciate it. Um, and I know it's, it's, it's a citywide problem and, uh, you know, this conversation has been ongoing for many, many years. Uh, you know, it, it sort of ties into the, the discussion with Union Pacific and that MOU that's been a long time coming. And I know obviously COVID and a host of other things have prevented that from moving forward, it seems to me. Uh, so I guess what, what I was curious about, Jim, is there, one, is there an update on the MOU with Union Pacific? I know we're working with them on sites along that sort of uh, the right away, but uh
Yeah, councilor, let me ask if Angel Rios is on and Olympia Williams. They've been leading our efforts on the Union Pacific MOU and I'll ask the two of them to, to chime in on that.
And you should know, by the way, I, I knew that they were, but I, I thought that, I know they're doing a lot of other things.
They, they are. This is certainly a team effort. So as, as we talked about, well, we've, we've consolidated the EOC and Angel is, is my co-operations coordinator. So Angel is, is intimately involved here.
Good.
Yeah, 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 council member, can you, can you repeat your question? I want to make sure I'm capturing it correctly.
I was just simply asking, I know a lot of the dumping and things of that nature are happening along the, especially the Monterey corridor. Which brings to mind the, the negotiations of UP on the MOU and I was just asking about the status of it.
Yeah, so, so actually, right, right before COVID, we actually had a pretty uh solid draft with uh Union Pacific. And, and in fact, uh, we came to a place where they pretty much have agreed to just about everything that we had asked for. And, and more importantly, they were actually already uh conducting the cleanups that we had negotiated even without an agreement. So um, that, that was kind of the good news there. And, and, and as, as you know, there was some significant progress being made. Where there was a lot of uh in, in, in jurisdictional coordination there. Um, our goal will still be, it still remains to get that MOU over the goal line mainly for uh future purposes. Uh, but again, short term, even without an agreement, I have to say that we're actually getting the traction that we need. Uh, despite the fact that we don't have a signed agreement. Uh, they are gonna, uh, they are getting ramped up again to start uh cleanups again. And part of what we're doing now is just And part of what we're doing now is just kind of coordinating and aligning those plans with with compliance with the health order as well, right? Because in the past, there was a heavy abatement tied to that work. And now, given the the order that we're under, we're having to modify that level of cleanup. Last thing I would add is that we're also helping them prioritize and identify not only the pre-existing hotspots, but newer hotspots that we're starting to see more legal dumping and trash and all and adding those to the list as well.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I know there's you know, I guess this is a good time to mention, you know, if you go down Monterey Road past Burnell, not too far from the from the site where we're building one of the bridge housing locations. As you're driving south, if you look off to the right, I mean, it looks like a scene from like Mad Max Beyond Thunderdome with burned out cars and it's just like a big explosion took place there. And so and so that's why I'm asking about this because it's very I've had people from the mayor of Morgan Hill, water district folks or superintendents, in addition to all the normal sort of folks that live in the community that obviously always are concerned about that type of stuff. So that's why I'm asking that because I think some of that falls on you in specific and I know Olympia, you've been very responsive to us. So I very much appreciate that. But along those same lines, and I guess this may be this this next question is maybe for Jim. Is that I know in past discussions as it relates to illegal dumping, we've had discussions about cameras. I think we have a certain amount of cameras floating around the city that are about $30,000 each or something along those lines. And so what I'm curious about is are we considering proactive steps and using some of this technology to to get folks to figure out who's who's dumping on our streets? I understand that obviously some of the garbage and things of that nature are from our unhoused folks that have nowhere to put their garbage. Totally understand that. But there in addition, and I think, Jim, you mentioned during your presentation is there are in fact other things that are happening, right? And those are folks that are just dumping things on the side of the road. And so what I'm curious about is what do we use? What are we doing to utilize that technology that we have and maybe purchasing more of that to put them in key areas? So that way we get license plates and we can actually cite folks for doing this stuff time and time again, because it doesn't seem to me that we're actively doing that.
Yeah, Councilor, the Environmental Services Department did lead an effort to install a limited number of cameras for kind of video surveillance and enforcement purposes. I do believe we've issued a few citations over that period of time when they kind of took over the illegal dumping and the rapid response kind of team that developed. You know, I don't know if they anybody from Environmental Services is on the line that could discuss that more. Olympia may be able to as well, but our team, our new EOC team, as we move forward on this kind of six month period of time, immediately, we're trying to work on emergency trash pickup, encampment kind of waste disposal approaches, but we recognize we need an education and enforcement element to make this successful. So the team will have to develop a kind of more comprehensive plan around that to be part of kind of the long term effort. And we view that as something that will happen probably in the the month two to six timeframe, probably in the September, October, November timeframe that we would develop that in more detail. We've had a pilot around that. I don't think it has yielded the level of result we need to fix the problem to have people feel like there are serious consequences for dumping in our city. We need that that will need to be ramped up. But there are resources that are required to do that. It is not a low cost issue to establish a really effective enforcement program. But we do believe that we need to bring code and others into the mix and into the team. But our first approach is to try and address conditions on the ground, but then put together education enforcement as part of as part of the long term plan.
Yeah. And do you know off the top of your head, Jim, how many cameras we have across the city?
I don't, Councilor. Olympia, do you know by chance?
Yes, Councilmember, we have three cameras.
So I laugh because as you say, I thought it was actually a little bit more. I thought it was like five. So you surprised me by saying just three. And so Jim, I understand that it's going to take a lot more effort and it's it takes resources and bringing in a lot of departments, but I think it's it's I think most of us could agree that three in a city as large as ours is probably not enough cameras to really gauge whether that's going to really have an impact on, you know, on citing folks and getting them to change behavior. And so I just think it's worthwhile to go down that road and explore. You know, even, you know, for example, you you mentioned there's going to be some pilot sites that you're working on. And I do have one question on that, but I just think it's worth exploring how we can really try to implement this a little a little bit more broadly with more cameras, more than just three in key areas. I mean, just in my district alone, I could point out maybe about three different areas that probably need cameras that that, you know, to give it a try and see what comes of it. I even have property owners along Monterey Road, Mr. Sasso, who's very active in the Coyote Valley space, who has offered to put cameras on his property at no cost to the city, just go plop them down. And so those are the type of things that I think we need to go down and explore. And so I very much look forward to hearing up more updates about this, but I think we start need to start taking a slightly different approach to try to figure out how we can get some folks to stop dumping.
I would agree. I think we need a proposal around that that is substantial enough to make a difference. So I would I would agree with you.
Even if it's a broader pilot, but very last question I have for you, Jim, is just that you indicated there were going to be five pilot sites for the illegal dumping. Is that was that correct?
No, it's five pilot sites where we're looking at a more systematic way to address encampment trash.
Okay, okay. And have you identified those yet?
I believe we have, Councilmember. Maybe I'll ask Rick Scott or Olympia Williams to describe where we're going to test that out. So Rick is the director of the branch and Olympia is the operations coordinator. So if either of you can take that.
Sure, Jim, I can step in. We assessed five sites that have a number of residents and also would be kind of more accessible for this regular dumpster service. And the preliminary sites are heading in spring. That's a that's a location Felipe, Roberts, Roosevelt, and Corey Court. And so again, all of these locations have a number of residents right now and are accessible for our dumpsters or for our providers. And our real goal here is to deliver something in the in the next couple of weeks, you know, get something out there and work with the contractors to understand what the costs are, what the challenges are with deploying this kind of model and determine if this is a scalable solution for more widespread deployment through throughout the city.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for all the answers. I'm going to stop there because I got a text from Vice Mayor Jones saying he only has about 180,000 hours left of his life. And so I've drawn that down a little bit. And so thank you for the information and I appreciate it. Thank you.
We shortened it by about 24 minutes, but who's counting? Councilor, it is.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm going to start my timer, so I'm going to keep track of myself and and in deference to my colleagues, including the Vice Mayor. I'm I also want to say I'm not interested in Monday morning quarterbacking, anything that happened with the trailers. I want to thank Reagan and your team. I this sounds like it was a really, really heavy lift. And I know from a conversation that I had had Jim with you early on when the trailers first arrived, over 100 trailers and saying, okay, they're they're not in great shape. They're really, really not in great shape. But we think we can get them usable for about $1 million. At that time, and hindsight is always 2020, but at that time, that sounds like a great plan. And so when it didn't turn out to be cost effective and staff said it's time to pull the plug, we think we can do something that is safer for our unhoused residents that is more sanitary and still provide them the services that they need and deserve in a different location, we're going to do that. I can't I can't give you enough kudos for that for because it's hard to say we tried something and it didn't work. And to come to us and to know that that you're every decision that you made along the way is going to be critiqued and criticized and come under the microscope. So I just want to thank you all for taking the leap to do it and then also, you know, coming and saying, you know, we're gonna we have to day like this because we care about the clients that we're serving and we can't keep going on this way. So I just want to say that's a long way of one minute and 45 seconds of saying, thank you for doing that. I really, I really appreciate it. I do have two questions that kind of came up with the public comments. Does the county want the trailers? Has there been any discussion about that? Is that related to the nonprofit that you're in discussion with? I guess I don't understand that.
So we have had conversations with the county. And first of all, they have not been able to actually cite the 15 trailers they received from the state. And so they've made no progress there and they have no interest in taking over these trailers.
Gotcha. Thank you for clarifying that.
In fact, they asked if we would take their 15.
Yeah, got it. Understood. And then the other thing that came up with public comment was the abatements being noticed. Reagan, can you clarify that? Or I'm maybe somebody else, but I'm who's in the note about that?
Clarify. So we did follow abatement protocol when a tent was blocking. I'm specifically speaking to the Guadalupe River Trail cleanup that just occurred for tents that were blocking the right of way on the trail. However, our street outreach teams and beautify San Jose teams had been regularly in the area for two weeks prior to the cleanup, providing advance notice that we were going to be coming through and cleaning up trash and large debris and asking people to move their tents and structures off of the trail. So when the cleanup actually occurred, there was only one structure left on the trail that we had to abate, but no one was taken into custody. And the overwhelming majority, all of the folks along the trail complied and were happy to see the cleanup and complied with moving tents off the the trail.
Thank you for that clarification.
Just add that I think the confusion is that we do use the traditional abatement notice. Because if there are tents that are left on the trail, we do follow the city's established abatement protocol so that we're properly storing people's belongings if there are any belongings. But as I said, so far, we have not had to do formal abatements.
And I'll just add very briefly, I had a slide in my presentation that talked about our encampment protocol update. And that kind of describes when we would specifically do it. And we will get more communication out on that so that the council is aware of the specifics and the community and the advocates are aware of the specifics as well. So we want to we will communicate it better than what we've been able to do thus far in trying to get a quick response to the conditions on the trail.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That's that will be very helpful. Following along with Councilmember Jimenez's questions about the the Union Pacific contract, I when we were talking about beautify SJ, there are of course creek areas and freeway areas as well that that have larger encampments now. What is what is the plan or is there coordination happening like it's happened? It sounds like I know it's really difficult with Union Pacific, but with Valley Water and with Caltrans, what's the Angel Olympia? You both turned on your cameras, so I'm not sure which one of you. I'm guessing it might be Olympia because you're the operations person. What's the coordination happening with those entities?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. So in terms of Valley Water, we do work in coordination with them along with our beautify SJ program as well as our homeless response team. At this time, they are also following the shelter in place guidelines as well as the CDC guidance. When they get ready to move forward with any type of abatement or cleanups along the creek in terms of an abatement, they would reach out and coordinate with our housing department and our beautify SJ team. I will tell you that they are getting ready to ramp up their cleanups along the creek areas throughout the city of San Jose in the next month.
So does that mean that abatements will happen in in coordination with those cleanups or will there be cleanups while still sort of following the shelter in place orders? Do you know?
These at this time would just be trash and debris removal cleanups. There would not be an abatement. So folks would still be there in their encamp sites. We would help them get rid of trash so it doesn't go into the creek.
Okay. Angel, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I was just going to add, I was going to mention that prior to COVID, we actually had planned in coordination with Valley Water a pretty significant cleanup of the creeks. It was actually scheduled for April. Very significant lift, a lot of planning in inter jurisdictional planning with that. Of course, that was all preempted with that was all that all came to halt with COVID. We have been in, in fact, I had a meeting with them last week about you know, really commencing more cleanup minus the abatement since we are under the the public health orders. So we are right now talking about what we can do given the parameters that we have. And as we finalize those, we'll share that with the council as well.
Great, thank you. I that's very helpful. And then is that also the case for freeway areas with with Caltrans? There is some trash starting to pile up on some of the on ramps, off ramps areas for sure.
Yeah, we will coordinate with them on that as as we're looking at kind of various encampment sites, hotspot areas and those types of things, we will factor that into our kind of broader effort here. And those areas that are freeway in nature, we will coordinate with Caltrans to figure out what's the best way to follow the county order, the CDC guidance, and yet try and get conditions kind of clean and sanitary.
Do you know if they've resumed their cleanups at all? They had halted them for a time. I don't know.
I don't know that. Olympia, do you know? You're on mute.
At this time, they have still halted their cleanups. They will address any type of debris that's out in the roadway only.
Okay, thank you. Is is I have some residents who have come to me and and they would like to 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 do a clean, you know, to volunteer for those kinds of cleanups in those areas. It sounds like that Caltrans hasn't restarted yet. Is that something Olympia, do I come to you? I don't want to put too much burden on. It sounds like you have a big job, but is that something I would coordinate with you?
So what I can tell you is that Caltrans in this district is coordinating with our anti litter program. We're both working on safety protocols to implement before we bring back our volunteers whether they're for the city or for Caltrans because quite a few of our volunteers that volunteer for the city are also Caltrans volunteers. We are looking at getting that started in late summer. We're waiting for additional guidance regarding the shelter in place.
Okay, so we're not started yet. I will I will relay that message. Thank you. And then my my last question is regarding Jackie, when you were talking about the hotel motels that are used for vulnerable residents. It sounds like there might there might be a little dispute about what the definition of vulnerable is. What's the definition that you're using for that? For placing people into the the motels?
I'm going to let Reagan answer that question.
That's a it's a good question and I think causes a lot of confusion. So it really is defined by people's medical conditions. Valley homeless healthcare program is their nurses and doctors are staffing that hotline. So they're taking people are referred to hotels if you are 60 and above with three or more health conditions or 65 and above with two or more of the underlying health conditions. But again, there are for example, people who might be younger than those ages but have severe health conditions. So they may have be 55 and currently in cancer treatment and they'll be put into a hotel. So they really are looking, I would say, for the most part at people's medical conditions and the severity of them.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Okay, thank you. That's helpful. So it's it's not something you could put in the bulleted list. And that's why.
It's not quite a clear cut definition always because it is really based on medical decision.
Thank you. And I I just want to just wrap up by saying I I do really appreciate the whole team's priorities of safety and sanitation and services. I know you you are continually doing that and and again, I just want to thank you for continually innovating to improve. And we we do try a lot of things. And and I also want to say that you know, in the middle of March, things, it's it's easy to forget how different things looked. But none of us were wearing masks. As we reminded us, we were still meeting in person, although we were distanced. We I we didn't have a map. We didn't have masks on when we were meeting in person in in March at our last in person meeting. Things have changed a lot since then, and there is no no person on this earth who knew how much things were going to change. And we just had to take things as they came. And sometimes we made decisions, but we always whether they were right or wrong, but we always made them with that priority of providing enough as much safety as possible as, you know, which includes sanitation and which includes services and doing that for our most vulnerable residents. And we continue to do that. So thank you for continuing to work. And I I hope you all get some semblance of a break in July.
Thank you. Councilmember Foley, you're up next. Just want to mention if if you need to go over the 12 hour, what I may do is just interrupt and we'll have you continue after lunch.
Good enough. I will try not to repeat some of the questions that I had that my colleagues have already asked, except and I don't want to belabor the the trailers. I think listening to the community speak about them, I really appreciate your comments and hear the frustration in your voices and how we we try to make the right decisions and do the right thing, but sometimes we make decisions really quickly, particularly with COVID, and we don't have the best information, but we still jump in and we make the decision and then we have to backpedal a little bit. So I don't want to second guess what we've done. The question is, how do we go forward and what lessons do we learn? And ultimately, how can we help more unhoused individuals by getting them into giving them hotel vouchers, which seems to be their priority? But as a council member, we are balancing both the needs of our unhoused community, which is serious and very important for us to to address. But we also respond to neighbors who are seeing encampments grow across the street from them, and they want us to address that issue. So we respond and we say sweeps aren't occurring, but we can help clean up the trash. And that occurs in district in all of our districts. We have issues with too much trash that needs to be cleaned up and addressed. And I'm I'm sensitive to the respect that we need to pay to our unhoused individuals and to provide them with more access to washing stations and porta potties and things like that. So is there anything we can do? Or how do we? I hear we have a few places that we're setting up dumpster sites that are connected with homeless encampments, large homeless encampments. It's not enough for the need in the city. So how do we how do how were those identified? What I heard the term large encampments a couple of times. What defines what's the definition of a large encampment?
Reagan, you want to go ahead?
I can take that one. So we really defined it by putting the people in the encampments first. So it's based on the size of the people living in the encampments. So large is sorry for the bad automatic lighting. Large is an encampment with 50 people or more, and a medium is about 25 to 50 people in an encampment.
Okay, that that's helpful because that does give us an idea as our council team, what that means and what your real response will be. Can I just offer that I know dumpster days are not on your radar. But dumpster days is something that the council offices could be could implement very easily in their districts and clean up some of the large item trash pickups that you might be able to avoid the illegal dumping if we were able to reactivate our dumpster days. We are ready to go with three or four sites. We have the budgets that are coming through for us to do that. And it's we can do so physically distancing and because you wear gloves and you're at a distance anyway with these dumpsters. So Jim or whoever or Angel, whoever's in charge of dumpster days, I would encourage you to try to move them up because really we can help with the trash by moving dumpster days up. It's something that we do regularly and we can we can handle that. And I know all the council offices could handle that for you. So
They are on our radar, Councilmember. We we realize that. And that's part of restarting all that we can and beautify. So so that is on our radar, and we appreciate that point.
Okay, great. And I know I only have three minutes or I have to stop. And that's I don't like stopping in the middle, but that's okay. So I'm just going to jump around based on my notes because they're not really clearly thought out. I appreciate all the questions from Sergio and Dev. Because they covered a lot, but I have a question about the hotel vouchers. What is standing in our way from providing more hotel vouchers? Is it money or spaces? Or both?
So this is Jackie. We're not providing hotel motel vouchers. So what's happening is the county in our partnership, the city took on the congregate shelters. The county has taken the lead on leasing actual hotels across the county. And so I believe there are 12 hotel motels they leased and they added a new motel when we demobilized the trailers. So it was our joint goal between the city and county that even when the city decided to shut down the trailer site, that we would not reduce the amount of capacity in the system. So we've replaced that capacity with motels of which the county is leasing on our behalf. Because they already have the agreements and the arrangements, they can they can do it much more quickly. We don't have any motels under our control or leasing right now.
Okay, thank you. We heard several comments from members of the public about the hotline not working. Who mans the hotline and what can we do to make it sure that it is less inefficient and that people are getting the responses they need in a timely manner?
So the county just sent me one of their reports regarding the performance of the hotline. And I think the challenge for us is I see the county reports and the county reports are saying there are people they're not able to connect with, but they make every effort to do so. What we have found is if people, so the people who have testified today could email us their the names of people that didn't get contacted in ways and we could connect with people, we will establish that connection. The county is making every best effort to contact people and to place them. And everybody that they have responded to, they have made an offer of either congregant shelter or motel space.
Jackie, could you offer an email address for folks who are watching?
Sure, I'm trying to think of my long name is hard, but yes, you can email.
Would it be homeless concerns? Would that be the best one?
Reagan, you want to jump in with an easier email that some people could remember?
You know what? I'm going to offer my my city email. I actually sit next to the hotline staff that answer the calls. So it's Reagan R A G A N dot Henninger, H E N N I N G E R at SanJoseCA.gov.
Thank you, Reagan.
Mayor, I know I'm at noon, but could I have like five minutes more and then we break?
Tell you what, why don't we? Why don't we pick up right after the break? Because I know that there's some additional matters we still have to deal with before we sign off. So I'm sorry, Councilmember Foley, for interrupting, but we will absolutely get to all your questions because I know we have many colleagues like to speak as well. Dave, I know there's some issues about trying to get some things resolved. I know we have land to buy for housing affordable housing project and fire station and other things. In terms of how we juggle the schedule, what do you suggest?
Yeah, I just I appreciate the opportunity because I think just want to acknowledge, you know, we've probably got 30 plus staff kind of queued up here to take on items. And then it looks like we have over 100 attendees. So, you know, I I'm wondering if there's a possibility of maybe if I'm making the assumption that most of the attendees or a lot of them are for item 3.10, if we were to make 3.10 time certain at five or six o'clock or something and try to pound through the rest of the agenda beforehand. I don't know if that makes sense. It's it's hard to pick items that we could postpone because they're all kind of been queued up to to happen today. So that's just something to offer for consideration.
Yeah, why don't we take that if we're going to come back at one? My suggestion would be then I'd say not before 5:30 for the item 3.10. So that way everybody in the public knows when they can sign on if they want to be here for 3.10. And we'll try to get through all the other items in the meantime. Is there any objection to that? Okay, we'll we'll break then for lunch now and return at one. And thank you, Councilmember Foley.